So, welcome and thank you for being with us tonight, Thursday, October 6th, for the Emeryville School Board Candidate Forum. My name is Alisa Mills of the League of Women Voters of Berkeley Albany Emeryville. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. We do not support nor oppose candidates or parties. The advocacy arm of the League may take positions on issues such as ballot measures. However, this forum is presented by the Voter Services and Education Arm of the League, which does not support or endorse candidates. The cosponsor for this forum is the Emeryville PTA Council. We hope that you are here because you want to make smart choices when you vote. The League is here to help you to make a smart choice, and we use a few simple rules to be sure you have the information you will need to help you make the decision through a fair and balanced process. It is important to the League to give the community a voice, which is why we invited the community to send us questions for the candidates in advance. Those questions have been sorted by a team of League leaders to avoid duplicate questions and select those questions that are most important to the community. I'd like to remind everyone that the candidates have all agreed to participate underground rules set for this forum. You can see the rules on our website on the Candidate Forum page. One of our volunteers will also put the link in the chat. We are recording this forum and the video will be available on our website, L W V B A E dot org, or on our YouTube channel and through VotersEdge.org slash C A, with links on our social media accounts at L W V B A E. There are four candidates running for Emery's Emeryville School Board Director. They are Regina Chagoya, Brian Donahue, Brenda Collins, and Susan Donaldson. You can vote for three candidates. School Board Directors are decided through a plurality vote. With a plurality vote, the candidates who receive the highest number of votes will be declared the winners. Now, let's go over a few rules for this forum. Each candidate has two minutes for opening remarks. The order was determined by drawing lots. The timekeeper will signal candidates with a green colored window, which will count down the seconds from two minutes to fifteen seconds to go when it will turn yellow and then red when the full two minutes is up. Attendees had an opportunity to submit written questions through our website or when they registered for the forum via Zoom. If you have additional questions, you may submit them by clicking the Q and A icon and typing your questions. Our volunteers will take the questions and pass them to me. All questions will be screened to avoid duplication and personal attacks. Please note that the chat function has been disabled for attendees. The order of answering the questions will be alternated, and each candidate will have one minute to respond to each question. Again, the timekeeper will signal candidates. There will be no separate rebuttals. However, the candidates may choose to use some or all of their one minute to rebut the response given by another candidate. Following the questions, each candidate shall have one minute for a closing statement. Now, let's begin with our first candidate giving an opening statement, and that will be Brenda Collins.
Thank you. While living in the Emeryville community for the past eighteen years, I made the choice to transition from a private sector to raising my daughter through the Emory Unified School District Educational System. After graduating high school from Emory Unified School District, she has completed her bachelor's degree in psychology and will graduate this spring with her master's degree in human resources. As a single parent, a ten-year previous employee of Emory Unified School District, and currently employed with San Francisco Unified School District, I realize it has become a personal goal for me to encourage our youth that if they can believe it, they most certainly can achieve it. I am passionate about serving our children, our youth, and building the capacity of others to create positive change. With a proven track record for building networks and effective relationships, I am poised in facilitating actions addressing issues such as student achievement and civic engagement. While completing my coursework with Harvard University Graduate School of Education, it was during that time when I truly realized that my character and leadership, both courageous and strong, ensured that I will positively impact the students, staff, and families. I am honored to have been appointed in 2017 by the Emory Unified School District School Board, elected in 2018 by the Emeryville Voters to do this work. And yes, there is still a great deal of work to be done. However, as I enter my thirtieth year in education, I look forward to continuing this journey to ensure, just like my own child, that every child has a quality and equitable education. Thank you for inviting me here this evening, and I look forward.
Thank you. Now, we'll hear from Regina Chagoya.
Hi, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for tonight's forum. My name is Regina Chagoya. I was raised by a single mom, and I'm a proud product of public schools from kindergarten all the way to graduate school. I'm also an elementary teacher. I've served as a teacher for fifteen years. I lived in Emeryville since 2014, thanks to the city's below-market-rate ownership program. Since 2021, I served as a Vice President of Berkeley Federation of Teachers, where I have advocated for resources for our classrooms and fought for better working conditions for teachers. Public education has saved my life. Thanks to public schools, I was fed free breakfast, free lunch, and I got life-changing counseling services for free. In 2022, I was appointed to serve on the school board. I applied because I believed in the educator's perspective in 2020 had even greater significance in the light of the challenges that schools faced during COVID-19 crisis. During COVID-19, I planned with teachers and after-school staff on how to safely reopen schools for students whose families were essential workers. I'm running under the priorities of equitable access to all students through individualized education, expand social and emotional learning programs, and seek more funds for mental health services. And lastly, I want to support working conditions that allow educators to thrive. I'm committed to working with labor partners, local teacher preparation programs, and colleges to grow our own staff. So, I'm thankful and I'm honored to be here.
Thank you. And now, Brian Donahue. Sorry, you're muted.
I apologize. My name is Brian Donahue. I've lived in Emeryville for forty-two years. My wife and I own our own home, and we have a seventeen-year-old daughter who attends Emory High School. We put our daughter in Emory, in Emory Schools as a kindergartner, and we took her out after fifth grade because of massive dysfunction at the, at the district. Well, in the last couple of years, we've returned to Emory for reasons I don't need to go into here for purposes of this forum, but she's now at, in high school. Although, we are looking to try to get her out again, and we're looking to try to get her into Berkeley High School, and we don't know if we'll be successful or not right now. But as it stands right now, I'm the only person running for the school board that has a child in the district. You'll note, if you follow the school board, you'll note that every vote that they take virtually, well, I would say pretty much every vote they take is unanimous. And that's a problem, because our district is failing in many ways. I'll get to it later on. And that's an indication of group think. We need a dissenting voice. This, this school district spends more money than any other school district in the entire East Bay by far. We spend $27,613 per student, and that is by far more than any other district. And we, but what are we getting for our money? Well, we're in last place academically. Twenty-three percent of our students are proficient in math, and in reading, it's thirty-seven percent. That's last place. Eight years ago, we were fourteenth and fourteenth place out of sixteen school districts in Alameda County, and then we dropped to last place, and we've stayed at last place ever since. So, these three incumbents have kept us in last place and at the highest spending rate in the East Bay. So, I said, "That's not good enough. I'm a vote for change." Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And now, Susan Donaldson.
Hi, thank you so much. My name is Susan Donaldson, and I am running for reelection. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for having this forum, giving us this platform to talk to our community. These last four years that I've served on the board, we have graduated one hundred percent of our seniors in 2019 and 2021. We have lowered our suspension rate, and we have increased our teacher retention rate every year, except for twenty-one, twenty-two, which was the pandemic. We have the highest growth on standardized testing in Alameda County for English language learners. In 2019, we won the College Board AP District Honor Roll for increasing course offerings and academic success. U.S. News ranked Emory High in the top forty percent of all U.S. high schools. And that's just some of the many things that have been happening at our district. Of course, I am not claiming responsibility for this, but studies do show that the impact of the school board on student achievement is indirect but essential. Boards create and sustain the conditions that support excellent and equitable teaching and learning. And that's what we've been able to do the last few years. While we don't always agree, as you may have just heard, we don't always agree, but we do respect one another. And we respect and support our wonderful superintendent and the team there, and as she leads our team onward and upward to more success. The pandemic created even more gaps in opportunity and achievement in our schools across the country, and I'm here to stay on and continue to support our community as we work to continue to close that gap. And I am very grateful for the opportunity to be a part of this special place. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, it's time for the candidates to answer your questions, and we'll start off first with Brian. What, in your view, are the top three challenges facing the school district, and how would you work to address them? Sorry, you're, you're muted there.
Can you hear me? Yes, I'm sorry. The biggest problem is that the we spend an inordinate amount of money on, way more than any other district, on educational consultants. Many of them are corporate for-profit consultants. And we should instead, we should just stop doing that, because the results are, are, as I indicated earlier, horrible academic results. And we should be, instead of spending money on failed programs, we should be using that money to support teachers. We should up teacher pay. That's my main thing I would do. And I would say we should also get, shake down the corporate community, like especially Disney Pixar, to honor their commitments that they have made to financially support our schools, and that which they have not done, and I would use my position to do that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And now, we'll hear from Susan. You're muted, yeah.
Can you repeat the question? Challenges?
Sure. What, in your view, are the top three challenges facing the school district, and how would you work to address them?
Our challenge, our, our challenges are, are not unique. You know, we, they are unique to a degree that we serve a community that, that has that we are a Title I school, and we do have students that have been affected greatly by the opportunity gap, by the gap in opportunity and achievement. And so, like many schools, we struggle with investing in the human capital of our school, investing in our teachers and our staff. We, we need to invest in them to create the conditions that help our students learn and help us try to close that gap. We need to continue to create a culture that supports our students' social and emotional health. We know that's a huge challenge for students right now, and we need to continue to support stable and effective leadership to continue to create that atmosphere where students and teachers and staff can thrive.
Okay. Thank you. And now, we'll hear from Brenda. Brenda, you're muted.
Okay, so, like most districts across the country, of course, we too, we have way more than three challenges. But for me, the top three challenges would be trying to recruit and retain quality staff. Especially since the COVID pandemic, a lot of people are choosing to work from home versus onsite, and that does seem to be a little bit of a challenge. The A through G requirements and making sure that we continue to improve them and move forward with increasing the educational gap and trying to figure out with the interruptions and the rise that we were on, how to continue to go in that direction and that path. And also, getting the community to realize that the old information and the stigmas attached to the district have changed and trying to figure out how to enlighten them.
Okay, thank you. And now, Regina.
Thank you. One, closing the opportunity gaps by setting clear student-centered goals for teaching and learning. We need district leaders and teachers to build relationships and trust, so there's shared value in their work, and they can work collaboratively, long-term coherence of programs, and move towards improvement. Two, mental health crisis in schools, specifically the pandemic-related stress, will require partnership with the state's Mental Health Service Division. I really also think we could work with the county's Family Department, Family Education and Resource Center. Emory is a small school district that can build on programs from the county and from the state. So, we could definitely fine-tune our efforts over time and build strong capacity. And third, I think the third issue is recruiting and retaining teachers, as my, you know, other folks are agreeing with. And I think that requires partnering with neighboring adult schools, child development community college programs, and work core programs that offer career development for young adults. So, we can retain teachers by improving working conditions, but we need to partner with the city to develop options. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. So, for the second question, we'll start with Susan. Here's the question. What innovations would you like to see the district introduce to improve student learning outcomes?
Well, we, one of our district goals is to be innovative and to use technology to help propel our students forward. And we do now currently have a one-to-one ratio with technology for our students. So, we are on a path to innovative methods and using tools to our advantage. But I do think there is a big opportunity to partner with companies, businesses in Emeryville. And Emeryville is known as a technology hub, as a destination. And I do think there's a giant, huge opportunity to continue. We're, we're, some have been taking place. There's a new one with Dynamics that's been happening. That's very exciting. And I am looking forward to working towards forming more relationships to get us partnered up, to get our students continuing on this path towards success with the newest technologies to be ready for jobs like anyone else.
Okay, thank you. And Brian?
Well, I wouldn't use the word innovative. I think I'd say because it's really basic, what we need to do. We need to pay our teachers more. Right now, Emory pays slightly less than average. It's close to average. But the teaching profession is basically in freefall. Teachers can't afford to live in this, in Emeryville. They can't afford to buy a house here. We need to transform our district to improve student outcomes. We need to transform our district into a place where teachers want to be hired, where they're clamoring to be hired, because the pay is so good, and also that they're treated well. But we need to put all our resources into paying teachers more so we can attract and retain the best and the brightest. And that's pretty innovative-free. It's pretty old-fashioned. You just, you, you know, it's what you, you get what you pay for. We need to throw everything at increasing, increasing teacher pay. That's what I would do.
Thank you. And Regina?
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. What innovations would you like to see the district introduce to improve student learning outcomes?
Thank you. I think something I'd like to see moving forward is the district working closely with the city so that we work, one, we could talk more about providing family housing so that we could get more families and increase our enrollment in our schools, as well as possibly support or build housing that can, we can be provided for our classified staff and our teacher staff and our use of land. And so, I just think kind of building, that could also have a positive impact towards our retaining teachers, our classified staff, and also inviting families. And so, we have children to serve in this district. Because we do, this district has seen, we've lost about eighty students, and it's happening statewide. And so, I think we really, it's time for us to work closely with our city and remember that, like, there is the classroom, but there are also external factors that affect whether our families attend to our school and whether our teachers can afford to commute from far distance because they can't afford to live here in Emeryville. So, I'm hoping for some partnership with the city. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, Brenda.
Yes, thank you for the question. Innovative is an interesting word, I would agree. But I would like for us to continue as we reach for the stars with our students. We are with Space Makers, doing some programming for our students. We have run in accelerations, and we have new technology that we brought to the districts and some of the programs. And I'd like to see us to continue. And I want to hear, and we listen to our students' voices, and they are the ones who can help us to stay innovative and let us know the best ways that they need to be taught and how we can support their learning.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, for this next question, we shall start with Regina. According to Salary.com, the median entry-level salary for Emeryville teachers is $49,793. If elected, what would you do to increase teacher and staff job satisfaction in the district?
Thank you for that question. I definitely see the need for us to work with our budget so that we can keep, because I think folks don't understand exactly what funds we could use for salary and for benefits. And so, we could only tap into our general fund. What you see in the public is the governor is, you know, flush and giving schools money. I mean, really, there, there are grants, there are one-time funds, or there's restrictions. So, there needs to be a clear understanding of what funds we could tap into and really holding that general fund available so that we can work towards possibly moving steps and columns. I think just recently, there was a moment where our teachers were staggered at the pay, and we were able to change that. And definitely, because, you know, not only do we compare our district with other districts with the same number of students, but really, we need to think about comparing our districts with our neighbors like Oakland and Berkeley, just like this county in general. So, I definitely think we could move towards that direction, and so that we could tap into our general fund to support our, our teachers. And not only just the salaries low, but also our health benefits to keep the benefits. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Brenda?
Yes. So, when it comes to teacher salaries, we are comparable with other districts. As of the last bargaining, they are very happy with the opportunity to have been given increases in their paying salaries thanks to the efforts and the collaboration for all of us and the stakeholders to pursue the Measure K funding, which allowed that. When you weigh in their benefits, it significantly raises them up on the bar in the Alameda County as to the wages and the benefits incorporated. A lot of districts, their, their wages are higher, but their benefits are lower. Some of them get $100,000, but their benefits come out of their full pay. So, it's comparative, and we were able to offer longevity stipends. And we are looking forward to trying to find more money to increase their salaries, because they most certainly do deserve it.
Okay, thank you. And now, Susan.
Okay, thank you. I think one of the, the challenge with the budget, as, as member Chagoya said, is that there, there's only so many funding sources that we can drink from, from, for teacher salaries. And so, one of the, one of my idea, my ideas is to increase the funding sources for teachers. Other districts, we, our parent-teacher organization, it essentially doesn't exist. When I was there, I was also a part of starting it, bringing it back. There are other districts where teacher, where the outside sources, like at the Parent-Teacher Organization, fund, fully fund several teacher salaries. And we have no outside source of, of funding for teachers. There is an opportunity there to work with the community, to work with businesses, to increase funding, increase funding sources to fund teachers.
Hey. Thank you. So, now, we shall hear from Brian.
Yeah, forty-nine thousand, yeah, that's reprehensible. It's terrible. Like I said, we need to transform from, from being like a, a, a school district that spends more money, that has more revenue than any other school district by far, with horrible, the worst outcomes in the East Bay. We need to change the whole dynamic. So, and the, and what we should do is make it so it's a teacher-friendly culture. So, we need to pour everything into, into teacher pay. So, again, stop the spending on educational consultants. We spend millions on that. Stop that. It's not working. We're in last place academically. We spend the most. So, stop. That's a thing that doesn't work, but that'll save us millions. We can put that into teacher pay. And also, as I said, a lot of, we're really top-heavy on administrative, administrators and administration pay, way top-heavy, way more than the other district in the East Bay. So, we need to cut the number of administrators and save that, save money can go to the teachers.
Okay, now, for our next question, we'll start with Susan. Parents have expressed concern about pandemic-induced learning loss. What would you do to address this problem?
I will continue to support our teachers and our staff as they are working diligently, full throttle, to address this problem. This is the top on everyone's mind, and I have total confidence that it is priority number one there. They are, we, we hear meeting after meeting about what is being done, and I have confidence that they are doing everything they can. They are, it's full stop ahead. That, you know, everyone knows that this has been a terrible couple of years. It has affected our children in terrible ways. And we are working full stop to address that learning loss and address social, emotional challenges, to face this head-on and work together as a team, supporting one another through this very difficult work. And, but I am here to support what is happening and to help it continue and to grow and to have success.
Hey, thank you. And now, Brian?
Okay, regarding the pandemic, you know, I'm not a epidemiologist. Sorry, mangled that, obviously. So, you know, so we have to defer to science. But how to recover, I, I think the good news is, you know, it's, the pandemic pandemic is, is sort of in the rearview mirror, at least becoming more so. And, but the way that we should evolve and the way that we should deal with it is, is by deferring to the teachers. You know, the teachers are the ones that are in the trenches. They're the ones that actually interact with the students, and they're, they know what's best. And so, I would say, you know, use science, of course, but also defer to the teachers. They're the ones that know. They're the ones that know the children intimately and, you know, and collectively. And that's how we should move forward with that. Thank you.
Hey, and Regina?
Can you ask the question one more time, please?
Yes. Parents have expressed concern about pandemic-induced learning loss. What would you do to address this problem?
Emeryville was the, I believe, the only district in the Alameda County to not reopen. But learning loss is definitely learning differently and learning different skills. So, you know, as a teacher myself who did teach from home, I'd like to believe and, and know the voters that we, you know, teachers did teach from home. It was just different. But we, right now, we're just out of crisis fatigue, and I'm hearing a lot of like, well, the teachers need to do this, teachers do that. I think this, to really help with our, our, you know, our, our, making sure our learners are successful right now is just extending the day, like, we could provide Like, we could provide some services before school starts, some like one-on-one tutoring services, really work with after-school programs. So we have extended learning opportunities. Um so that our teachers can focus on the work with their classroom and their students, possibly partner with UC Berkeley students to get them to be tutors as opposed to like online programs. Definitely get some one-on-one um tutoring services for our students. And um yeah, I think that's a a good direction. We have a neighbor, UC Berkeley, and we have community colleges. We could hire these students.
Thank you. Okay, um Brenda.
Yes, thank you. So parents, like the rest of us, have a right to be concerned. Um of course, the pandemic did cause a reduce in learning. However, the programs that we were able to put in place were modeled through um by other districts when it came to how to keep our children on track the best way we could. Um now that we're on recovery, we have lots of tutoring, and I would like to make sure that continues. But I also would like to see a a parent support put in place to help the parents in how do you support your children with the um reduced learning? How how can you help? And how can we help the parents to help the children to to fill that gap and to bridge that gap? So maybe some parent and student workshops and and some support groups around the the loss in learning, I think would be very helpful in our district.
Okay, thank you very much. Um next, we shall start with Regina. And the question is, according to the California Department of Education, the reading proficiency for Emory Unified School District is thirty seven percent and the math proficiency is twenty three percent. If elected, how would you ensure that these scores improve?
Thank you. Um if elected, I definitely would give the directive to um, because you know, as board members, we give direction. We don't explain how to do something. We just give the what. And um a working group that would partner with um teacher leaders, maybe literacy coaches or um response to intervention specialists and folks, teachers that are, they're specialized in phonics and reading instruction. Um and I I heard um trustee Collins about um having family parent literacy night workshops, like how can we get our family part, like create this partnership with our parents? Because learning, it only happens at school, but also at home. So we definitely need some like learning, um some literacy nights, some some math nights. And um again, as I mentioned before, really having some tutoring. So there's nothing like one-on-one um services with this, as you know, a specialist, a teacher, a tutor with a student. So that's the direction I would like to to seek out. So that would be my step. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh now let's hear from Brenda.
Okay, can you repeat the question for me, please?
Sure. According to the California Department of Education, the reading proficiency for Emory Unified School District is thirty seven percent and the math proficiency is twenty three percent. If elected, how would you ensure that these scores improve?
So the scores that we have now have improved from the past, which is really good. Um we've had a significant improvement over some other districts as well. And I have all the information right here in front of me that I was looking at. I want to make sure that we continue on this track. And uh of course, making sure teachers have fair wages and support the learning is an incentive to keep us on the track. Um implementing, you know, like we said before, is kind of tied into the tutoring. And it's uh like member Jagoyes, we do need to uh go ahead and focus on the parent uh engagement and how we can support them and help them on their end as well as our end. How do we, as a community, work together to get these numbers better? We do have to do better, and we have done better, but we still can do our best.
Okay, thank you. And Brian.
Okay, uh council, I mean, a board member, uh Collins just said we need to keep on track. No, we don't. We need to get off the track that we're on. That's the problem. That's why we got, but the question, the question was correct. Twenty-three percent in math, thirty-seven percent on English. That's the lowest percentages of any school district in the entire East Bay. The lowest. And it's been the lowest for more than four years. With you, with these uh school board members in charge, they have not bumped that up at all. It stayed on, we're on the bottom and we've stayed on the bottom. And now we're talking about, you know, keeping on the track and then their their campaign slogan is we want stability, which means the status quo is good. So I think that's that these these uh this, the school board likes being on the bottom. That's their comfort zone. And you know, we need to, we need to improve the students' academic outcomes, and I will get more into like with specifics about that later, I hope. It's it's a, it's a, it's a hu- a huge problem.
Okay, thank you. And now Susan.
I'll start by quoting the California dashboard that San Lorenzo unified, unified uh thirty-two point thirty-two percent, mathematics twenty percent. Uh Oakland unified thirty-five percent, twenty-five percent. So it's just plain, it's just not true what Mr. Donahue is saying about our district. And again, to change, just in 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 another um another thing that we're doing at the district to change the narrative, not only with the community, but within ourselves is this, we have implemented a grading for equity, which is to re to reconfigure how we look at success and how we measure success so that all of our students know that they can be successful. That success looks different for everyone. It's always about the dashboard. It's not always about the numbers. It's about improving. It's about growing. Um it's about working with what you have and finding the support you need and needing.
You. Thank you. Okay, we're going on to the next question. This, a successful board collaborates well. How have you collaborated with other leaders in the past to build and realize a shared vision?
So it's very essential when you're working with more than just yourself that you understand the characteristics and and the and what it takes to be a team player. Uh you know, you're not making decisions all by yourself. You know, you need to work together. And right now, the way the board is moving forward, the collaboration, it's amazing. The work we're getting done, it's amazing. The hundred percent graduation rate and what they're doing on the ground, our teachers, our staff. You know, we have amazing teamwork, and that's what the stability is about. The diversity speaks for itself. And we just want to continue just having a stability in our district so that we can move forward. And you know, it's just, the collaboration is important. You have to work together. And you have to agree to disagree. And when you disagree, you have to be respectful. And you have to know that all of our little pieces, we put them together and it makes a big puzzle.
Okay, thank you very much. And now Regina.
Um can you repeat the question?
Yes. A successful board collaborates well. How have you collaborated with other leaders in the past to build and realize a shared vision?
Okay, thank you. Um so I was appointed in the school board in December twenty twenty. The following year, I participated in, well, my colleagues and I actually participate in the California School Board Association Conference that happened December twenty twenty-one. And that gave us an opportu, I mean, you know, that gave us an opportunity to see that we're not alone in these issues. Many of these issues are statewide and they need our advocacy and our collective efforts. Um and at the time, the hot, you know, the the topic was pushing for the governor to provide emergency education relief fund. And so it started there and with our advocacy and and, you know, putting together um some, a list of wants. We were able to get that as a collective. Uh I also work with the California Latino School Board Association. Um and right now, we're working on how to best support our English language learners. And um and I'm aware that, you know, our district does provide, they have a district English learner advisory committee um that I look for too. This is an example on a micro level, working with them, because I'm working with um California Latino School Board Association and a state. Thank you.
You. Okay, so now we shall hear from Susan.
Okay, so before this board, um I served for over ten years on the board of the Bay Area Girls Rock Camp, which is a um international organization that empowers girls through music. There, I went through many trainings, um ah yeah, many trainings on how to be an effective board member, how to lead um successfully, how to work as a team. Um on this board, I think, again, like Regina mentioned, we've all been through many trainings together. Um I also completed my master's in governance pro uh certificate with the California School Board Association. Um where emphasis is on working as a team, working as an effective board. Um this board, I feel like we have been a board that models positive and professional relationships. We have fostered mutual accountability and transparency that has let us engage openly with our community and support our school and staff and lay a foundation of trust and success.
Thank you. And and now Brian.
I just, I'm sorry, I was chuckling. I was on mute, but I was chuckling when Susan was talking about, you know, citizen engagement and all, because that's, you know, that's frankly, it's laughable. Okay, so the question is, it's really for the school board members. I'm not a school board member. It's how on the boards need to be collaborative. How have you collaborated on the board? So I'm not on the board. I can't really answer directly because I'm not on the board. But I will say that there was a city schools committee that uh used to be in an uh extent. But the city and those, and the both teams, the city council members and the school board members were so uh at at loggerheads that they just disbanded that. So uh you know, there's not a good history about collaboration. And you know, I heard, I just heard words like the improving. Susan said that, you know, the collaborations improving, teachers are happy, Brenda said. Uh yet, and yet, there's the numbers don't show that. So okay, my time is up, but thank you.
Thank you. And um this will be um our final question tonight. And for that, we're going to go back to you, Brian. And that is, what is an example of an equity concern that you have championed and addressed?
Yeah, I have long tried to get this board to tr- treat the citizens equitably. Um citizens that come from the community that have uh that are critical of the school board's policies are routinely shut down. For instance, me, I've been a critic. I'm a dissenting voice here. I think this school district needs to, you know, basically have major systemic changes happen. So I'm a critic, and the school board, including these three are, don't like being criticized. They don't like the criticism. And so they, they, the uh, basically, they shut down. They actually literally shut down of the citizen comments at the, at the school board meetings. I mean, I've literally been shut down violation of the Brown Act by uh by Brenda Collins and then not uh sustain or sustained by the other two. And so, you know, that's not equity. And so, you know, that that, that needs to change. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And now Brenda.
So uh I've been in the district for eighteen years. And I've worked for the school district for ten years. And during that time, I wore many, many hats. And the concern of mine was being uh like our voice is not being heard, which is why I make it very, very, I make it very clear to everyone that I'm listening and that this board is a listening board. And and that we show kindness and care and we're equitable to everyone as long as they come to us and they're respectful. And we don't have to mute them because the Brown Act says that we can, because we don't have to tolerate the disrespect. We are humans. We have emotions. We have to take care of our emotional health. And I'm glad it is knowledgeable so that instead of people accusing us of not being fair, it's more of equity situation where we're treating everyone equitable.
Okay, thank you. And now let's hear from Regina.
Can you repeat the question? Sorry.
Yes. What is an example of an equity concern that you have championed and addressed?
Yes, um example of equity concern is uh counseling and mental health services that I have championed and addressed. And uh specific, and what's, we call it wraparound service, where yes, the child has a teacher and they're in the classroom. But there's also other services that the children need, whether it's a psychologist, a counselor, a social worker, and all these services have a cost. Um and then I worked closely with labor partners and with California School Board Association to advocate for the community schools to be funded. And there's, there's money and our district qualifies to get funding from the community schools program. And um and it's those, that money gets to be spent on having our psychol- psychiatrists, our counselors and our social workers and all these other services that our students and families need for free. Um so yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And now Susan.
I would say that um a way that I have addressed equity in our district is to put an emphasis on understanding families and the partnership that we have with the families of our school. Um a family what's happening with child's home and a child's family affects, affects everything and their learning. And how do we reach, how do we reach family members? Are we reaching? Are we using phones? Are we using computers? Are we using uh text messaging? Are we having meetings at hours when families can attend? Are we finding every, all the ways to communicate? Um that, I would say that working on on the board, but also working as a parent and the founding a founder of the parent teacher organization, that that is a way that I helped to address equity in our district.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so before the candidates give their closing statements, I have a few remarks on behalf of the LWVBAE. Thank you to the candidates for running for office and for your participation this evening. I also want to thank the audience for engaging in our democracy. For further information about upcoming forums, the candidates, pros and cons, and positions on ballot measures, please visit our league's website, lvvbae.org or votersedge.org slash C A. We invite you to join a league to help us engage voters and defend democracy. We do so much more than voter registration and education. We work on issues like climate change, criminal justice reform, healthcare, and much more. Visit our website and social media accounts at LWVBAE. The deadline to register to vote is October twenty-fourth this year. You can register to vote online at the Secretary of State's website, sos.ca.gov. Vote by mail ballots will be sent to all registered voters from October tenth. Remember to return your vote by mail ballots by Tuesday, November eighth, election day. Or vote in person at any of the vote centers in Alameda County. We are encouraging voters to vote as early as possible. For more information about voting in this election, please visit our website, lvvbae.org slash elections or votersedge.org slash C A or the Alameda County Registrar of Voters website, acvote.gov. Now, the candidates will make closing statements. We will reverse the order that we began with. And each candidate will be given a closing statement, will will give a closing statement of one minute. And so to start us then will be Susan.
Okay, thank you again so much for having me. I'm just going to quickly review some of those numbers that in the last four years, we've graduated a hundred percent of our seniors in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-one. We've lowered our suspension rate, increased teacher retention every year except for last year. We have the highest growth on standardized testing in Alameda County for ELA. We've won the College Board AP District Honor Roll for increasing course offering and the academic success. U S News ranked Emory High in the top forty percent of U S high schools. So we're changing the narrative. Um and my goal is to So we're changing the narrative and my goal is to be a better steward of public education. The more we effectively communicate with the community about the importance of public education and the challenges and opportunities faced by public schools can foster a better engaged community that is dedicated to continuous learning and to supporting public education for all children. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And now Brian.
Yeah, my my wife and I adopted our our daughter from China. So she's Asia. And so I just the other day I went and looked it up, see how this school district is doing by way of its Asian students. And here's what I've got. These numbers are just shocking. Okay, first of all, Emory goes about 38% Asian. 11% of Emory students are Asian. Okay, the math proficiency of Asian students in Emory enrolled in Emory is 38%. The statewide average is 74%. The English proficiency of Asian students at Emory is 33% and the statewide average for English is for Asians and English in California is 77%. So those numbers are atrocious. And you know, this is why I'm running. We and they're trying to like sugarcoat this. This is a massive failure of public policy. We need to change in this district. I would be a dissenting voice. We need to stop the group think, have a new direction. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll hear from Regina.
Thank you again for hosting this forum and the work you do for the community. And thank you listeners for your time. I'm a product of public schools. I am proud of being a public school teacher for 15 years. I'm proud to be an organizer and working in partnership for the better working and learning conditions. As a neighbor, I'm asking for your vote and would be honored. I'm running for school board in this election because I want to continue providing students the right support systems and to be part of the solutions on a local county and state level. I'm proud to be endorsed by the Emory Teacher Association, Alameda Labor Council, all current school board trustees, Senator Nancy Skinner, Alameda Democratic Party, Alameda County Democratic Party, Emeryville City Council Member and Parent, Anna Martinez, and a variety of teachers and community members, and I hope to gain your support as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And now Brenda.
Oh, hi, I thought I was gonna go last.
Yes, you that's where we are now.
Oh, okay. So quickly, thank you. Okay, I want to just thank you to the LWVBAE for providing this platform for us this evening and for the invitation. I'd like to ask everyone to please in invite them to join those that have endorsed me, including the Alameda County Democratic Party, the Emory Teacher Association, California Schools Employee Association, council member and parent Diane Martinez, council member Courtney Wells, all school board trustees. And I'd like to thank the viewers and I look forward to them casting their vote to keep me doing what I'm doing and what I've been doing so well for the last 30 years in education and to bring it to our district, taking it to another level. Please vote November 8th and please encourage all your friends and your family to register to vote and to encourage others to encourage them to register to vote. Thank you.
Thank you all. So I want to encourage everyone to please join me in a virtual round of applause for our candidates. And thank you all for attending and good night.